Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Tuesday, June 4th, 2019. Please join me in the pledge. Okay. Any correspondence?
No.
Any public comments? The public is all on the agenda, so we'll skip that. So approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 21st. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Aye.
I'll second. And then I'll note that the capital nonrecurring items, just to clarify, the minutes were to be tabled for up to July, to a meeting in July, because that wasn't clear. So are there any other amendments, changes? All right, hearing none. Those two voting to approve as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries. First selectmen's report, there is some good news to talk about, although today's Tuesday. Tomorrow night at the stroke of midnight, everybody in Hartford turns into a pumpkin, and anything can happen. However, what we know so far is that the governor and the legislature have agreed on a budget, I believe, did it vote on, did they vote on today?
I thought they did. I thought the House voted yesterday and the Senate was voting today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The budget actually gives Bethel a little bit more ECS monies, but most importantly, it does not charge us $250,000 plus for teachers' retirement. So those are good things. There are some other things in there that some people will not like. There's a new tax to fund the family medical leave program. There's some other things in there, no general income tax changes, and no tolls as yet. The governor has said that he wants to have a special session after the 1st of July to deal with the issue of tolls. So we'll see, but it's not currently in the budget that is winding its way to the governor's desk right now. So it would appear that if that holds, that we've dodged a little bit of a bullet. There's still the implementer bill, although they attach the implementer to it this time.
Yeah, and it's not there. Well, the education part is not included.
Yeah. So far, we're good. Other things that have occurred, they've loosened up guidelines on liquor sales to, basically to help the burgeoning brew pub industry, you know? So there's fewer restrictions on places that brew, either brew beer or make wine, that they can sell on site. So that gets Connecticut kind of in the direction of catching up to states that have done this for a long, long time and have very healthy, you know, craft brew industry. So that passed. I believe the bill to raise the legal age to purchase cigarettes from 18 to 21 has passed both chambers and is waiting for the governor's signature. And so far, that's all we have, but it's been a good week so far.
How much more money are we getting, you know?
So...
For ECS?
So what I understand is what Matt said about between, I think it's about $86,000 or $89,000.
Yeah. It's between $85,000 and $89,000.
Yeah. That's what it looks like, that more than we were expecting to get. And I think the more significant thing is the TRB, personally, because that, I thought there was two factors for that. One, it was opening a door to a much bigger liability over time, but I know that there was, that we budgeted a little bit for that also.
Mm-hmm.
That was about $126,000.
Yep. Yeah, 126 of the first year.
Correct.
Yeah, right.
Correct.
Okay.
I believe that's what Bob was budgeting.
Right. Okay. Any questions? Anything to add? Nope? Okay. Moving on, before we move on to new business, I'm going to make a motion that we put one item on the floor that does not appear on the agenda. I'm going to, because we have folks here for that, I'm going to call it new item number 1A, so it comes right after our discussion about the BHS track. So I'm going to, would like to make a motion to add to the agenda consideration of purchase of fire safety equipment for Stony Hill Fire Department from capital nonrecurring 2019-2020.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that'll be the second new item we deal with. So going back to item number one, consideration of bid waiver for BHS track resurfacing. Now, at the last meeting on May 21st, we approved from the current year capital nonrecurring 120, 130...
135, you approved.
135,000. And there was discussion of requesting a bid waiver at that time, but we didn't take action on it. But I'll turn the floor over to either Dr. Carver or Eileen, whoever wants to talk about that.
The main reason for the bid waiver is that as soon as the Board of Finance next week hopefully approves it, we can get on the schedule for the track company. The second one, the company that has the bid in is the company that installed the track originally.
Uh-huh.
So they know the facility, they know the surfacing, they know everything, so they can come in and do the track. And right now, he's going to, would try to squeeze us in to get it done in August before school would open, since we have that window now of extra time. If we went to a different one, we could be looking at October, because we're at the end of the scheduling season of getting this done. Like, if we would have had the money in January, we could have got on the...
Bid list.
The list, the schedule for these track companies, that they are, they have their June-July schedules out, you know, done then. Now we're kind of, and the gentleman is willing to work with us to get into the schedule.
Is this the same company that held the price for the last three years?
Yes.
Two years.
And I also spoke to Mrs. Grimes today, and I do think that it's also their quality of their work.
Yeah.
The track, since the original installation has really held up well.
Yes.
And I think that's partially due to the quality of the company.
I mean, we probably got two to three extra years out of the track because of the company that we're using, that installed it originally. You know, that part was done correctly, and then the resurfacing is just keeping up to their work that they do, the outstanding work that they've done.
And I believe that when it went out to bid for, with the turf, and they got alternate bids, the bid was competitive.
Yeah.
So remember, we went out to bid for the turf?
Yes.
And in that turf bid was the track resurfacing.
Yeah, it was a package.
Correct. But it did break it out. So the price is very competitive. I mean, it was probably on the low side.
Yeah. I don't think you're going to get anything different. If not, it might be higher, because the company does not know the surfacing and has to do it.
Have they inspected the track?
They did it last year in March, the last time, so...
I'm just looking at item number seven, says optional work if it is determined that the surface needs the scope of work stated below, please add $10,750 to the base price below.
Right. So that's why we went to 135.
Okay.
As the price that you have in the nonrecurring right now. So, because it's really 125, and he gave us a $10,000, just in case.
In case.
Yep.
Okay.
But there are other companies that could have bid this, correct?
There are. Not sure if they're in the state of Connecticut. This is out of New York.
Yeah.
So...
You know, as I spoke before at some of our other meetings, you know, waiving bids are a turkey situation, you know, on our part. I understand that, you know, the company that installed it originally, they know everything, but it's $135,000 we're appropriating to do this.
Yeah, when, if it helps you. There were other companies who bid when we went out with the turf, because if you remember, it was a, it was a package.
Yeah.
And like I said, so we did at one point do that, and like I said, the prices were very similar.
Right. So I think you're looking anywhere between 125 and 140.
Correct.
As the average price, so...
Okay.
Eileen, just out of curiosity, over the past about 10 years, that track's been there?
Yes.
Have we had anybody go there and beat it up intentionally?
No.
Drive over it, or...
No. No, we've not, we've not had the wear, like the use, the damage use of it, or any type of like that.
I remember before, we had all sorts of...
I think coat grams of...
No. I mean, we've had, you know, in the past, before we had it resurfaced, there was, you know, certain things would damage it. We have two tarps that are rolled across, and that's huge. There's no cleats that walk across the field.
Yeah.
Things like that. So, and there's a netting system now, too, if balls get hit, the net, it stops the balls from going anywhere, and there's no, somebody running off across the track to get a ball somewhere else.
Okay.
So there's been safety and contingencies put in place that have helped with that.
Okay.
And there's the guidelines and educating the people. Educating the use, the people that are using the field is key to keeping the track the way it is.
Okay.
I noticed that when the marching bands come in, they put out the, put out the tarps, and nothing without rubber wheels gets on there.
No.
They drag it on the grass.
Yeah, and like we don't even, and I think part of it, too, is the stroll, when we, before we put the track in, the only place moms could do strollers were, it was around the track. Now we have the cower where the strollers are used. So there's other entities in town that are keeping the, using strictly to running and track and field type of things on it, so...
Okay. Marty, do we have to have that long bid waiver language to read into the record?
You gotta have something. You know, the charter says, and it's not even one reason, the charter says reasons. That's what I was just looking up.
Okay. Well, the only part I remember was in the public interest and the public economy.
Well, yeah, but I think if you look at the ones we've done in the past, we've had three or four reasons for it.
Yes.
You know?
Yeah.
There could be, I don't know what they are here.
Time, time, money, and...
It's time.
Quality.
Yeah.
What's that?
Time, money, and quality.
Yeah.
Quality of the work, I think, should be number one, and then it's the time scheduling of, to get the work done within a timely manner, because if you don't get it done in August or September, it's going to have, and then you can't do it in April and May, because track season and the, it's not warm enough to do.
Yeah.
The temperature wise, it's not great to do, so...
If we had this earlier enough, we could have done it. I mean, I'm looking, your proposal is dated March 1st.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we're in June.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, if we had it even a couple weeks ago, we could have sat down and penciled something up and be done with it, you know?
Yeah. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the bid waiver for the following reasons. One, it is based on the quality of the work. This is the company that installed the original track. Two, that, because this will allow for a timely resurfacing of the track. And three, the previous bids were all the same ballpark, and there's no significant difference in price. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That carries?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item 1A, consideration of purchase of fire safety equipment for Stony Guys, thanks for coming out. So let me give you a little bit of a preamble. At the last meeting, we had a list of capital nonrecurring. That was one of the things that was paid for out of the current fiscal year. The board of selectmen was not comfortable with going any further until we got closer to the start of the new fiscal year, because that's, that's the budget, well access to pay for your stuff. But Tom, the chief came to me over last week, contacted me last week, and outlined the need for, I think it's the tank refilling?
Yeah, the SCBA fill station.
Okay. So anyway, this still can't be purchased, actually, the transaction can't occur till after July 1, but I didn't want to set us up, because the board of finance would have to approve this as well, I didn't want to set it up so you have to wait till the middle of July, like get another whole six, you know, five, six weeks down the road. So if they could, they could, they could approve this thing at their meeting next week, and then just execute the purchase after the new budget kicks in. But if you wanted to talk about the need and what you're, you need...
Sure. Right, so the current SCBA compressor, basically it's a compressor motor, it's a six horsepower motor with three fill stations for the air bottles, and it has three large air bottles attached to it, which is a storage. It was purchased, to the best we can tell, around 1989, 1990, which is when I joined, when I graduated high school, so that was 29 years ago. It's got over 880 hours on it. And again, now the newer SCBA's, our air bottles go up to 4,500 pounds, but the next generation of SCBA is already, some departments already have it, they go up to around 5,500 PSI. So this will feel support up to 6,000 PSI of air pressure for those types of SCBA bottles. And it'll also fill the system we have on the rescue truck that has a small compressor, not a small compressor, just a fill station to fill bottles on scene. So basically, the unit's 29 years old. It gets, it gets, the air test is done quarterly by Air Compressor Engineering, they do a quarterly air test, make sure the air quality is good, obviously, because we're breathing it. They do an annual maintenance on it, they've done an annual maintenance since 1989, once a year. But, you know, the fill on it's not as fast as it used to be, so it takes a long time to fill it back up with air. And they've noticed that the compressor motor's starting to leak some oil, and it's got a funny little noise to the compressor now that, that, you know, he called me one day and said, you know, things are starting to make a funny noise. And we started, and we're like, oh, it's not that bad, it always makes this little noise, but you hear this pinging sound. And he said, you know, that's, it's got a leak, and somewhere that's leaking oil, you can smell the burnt oil, so it's pretty much, you know, after 30 years, it's pretty much on its way out. So a few prices we received, we've got one from Air Compressor Engineering, which is the lowest price, and that should be in your package, that's from January. Again, there's a few different items on there, you know, add-ons and things to get a carbon monoxide monitor built in, obviously, so we don't generate carbon monoxide. And then the big difference in price is the storage cylinders. If we go with the ASME cylinders, basically, you never have to hydro test those cylinders, those large cylinders don't have to come out, get sent out, get hydrostatically tested every 12 years to make sure that they're not going to explode. So I, you know, just think for the downtime and maintenance, that it's worth it. And again, I think on yours, I wrote it in, they didn't include freight and insulation, but I had that cost, so total cost is about $48,000. And then I have one other quote there from AAA engineer, or AAA Emergency Supply and White Plains, which is a vendor we use a lot. They have a similar unit, it's a Bauer, but you can see the price of that is about $65,000. And that didn't include a third price, but from another company, Shipmans, that we've dealt with in the past, they have the same Bauer, and they're around $65,000 also. So, you know, for the lower price, and then that stallion, some other area departments have that stallion brand fill station, so we think for, you know, it's around $48,000, $40, so I guess around the $50,000.
How many new bottles are you ordering?
So the bottles are separate, they're going to order 12 of the 45-minute SCBA bottles that go on the air packs. So this is just a standalone station that's in the firehouse, when the bottles are low, you put them in there, you put three in at a time, and it fills it back up with air.
The question I ask, you said you're going to go up to 5,500 PSI?
Well, you could, yeah, you can, it's, you know...
What do you normally maintain?
4,500 PSI.
4,500?
Yeah.
And these new cylinders can take 55?
Right. Yeah. So the air compressor is built for 6,000, where are, the current compressor is like 5,000 now, so it's a little...
So you're going to have to differentiate your...
Oh, yeah, there's a gauge on there that you can preset it to 4,500, and then...
Are your cylinders marked for maximum PSI?
What's that?
Yes.
They are.
Yeah.
Reason why I asked to be in this chat.
Oh, yeah, so they're max at 4,500 currently.
Okay.
Yeah. So it's a little bit, regular motor, so the refill time is quicker.
What's regular set? It doesn't get adjusted?
Yeah, it gets preset, and it doesn't get adjusted to...
Okay.
Tell me the difference between a stallion and a brewer longevity? I mean, we've gotten almost 30 years out of this one.
Yeah.
It's one...
Yeah, the one that we have now is an Eagle, which is a very similar brand to a stallion, so I mean, it's the same type that Air Compressor Engineering has serviced and sold over the year, so it's, you know, we're confident that it'll be a similar item, and will give us the same amount of time out of it. So that's a big ticket item, is that, that there for that?
Okay, so the item that you had in the original budget for 50,000 is actually $48,000, $40.
Yeah. Correct.
Now, how about the other stuff?
So the 12 45-minute SCBA bottles, that's, this is year two of a two-year project, where again, these are the bottles that are on the air packs that the firefighters wear.
Yeah.
They have a life, a certain life expectancy, expectancy. After 10 years, they're not serviceable anymore, because they're a carbon fiber type cylinder, not steel.
Mm-hmm.
So they just are basically no good, so we need to replace the other half of the bottles.
It's a weight issue, right?
Yeah, yeah. Carbon fiber, obviously, a lot lighter than, you know, the bottles used to be steel, so...
What's the maximum PSI on those?
They're the same, they're 4,500, yeah. Yeah. So when we bought the air packs 10, 12, 10 years ago, you know, we bought them in a couple of years, so this is kind of doing the other half of those air packs, just...
How, every year? How many do you replace per year?
We haven't replaced any air packs in quite a while.
Okay.
Yeah. The pack itself, you know, is pretty sturdy and stays pretty well. So that's what that is, that's the bottles at 13,35 each. I think last year, there were 12, 10, but there was a price increase every year through Scott. You know, we buy this from AAA Emergency Supply and White Plains, and they have the contract for New York City for SCBA and everything else under the sun, so we're probably getting pretty decent pricing from them, so...
I'm sure you went through quite a few air packs, not the last fire.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the 12 45-minute SCBA bottles for $17,000. And if you want to go to the masks, so basically, I think we talked about this at the budget presentation, the masks that the firefighters wear, there's a new standard for the temperature rating of those. They're a high-temperature mask now, they've had some incidents where firefighters were overcome and trapped and killed, because the temperature of that Lexan glass, the mask on there, wasn't high enough rated that they would actually melt in the fire, and obviously then they are breathing the superheated gases.
How many of these do you need?
We bought a couple at the end of last year, just with some leftover funds, but we're looking to replace 12 of those at 325 each, and that will give the three apparatus, the three main apparatus, every air pack on those will now have the high, you know, the new style high-temperature mask on there. We actually crazed one in that training fire.
Was this built into the budget for, in your presentation?
No, all these items were in our, in our operating budget under capital.
Yeah.
But then they were all removed to, at some point, go to the capital nonrecurring.
Yeah. Yeah, board of finance pulled them out of here.
Yeah, they were all the capital items that we had, so...
Okay, now the radios.
Yes.
Is that something we can, we have to deal with the police department radios, too? And I would prefer to, are these similar, are they the same types?
They're the same type, the difference is, these are tri-band or all-band radios. So the police department, they're fortunate enough, right, they're on the same bandwidth as we are, but they don't usually go mutual aid a lot. So when we go to Newtown or Brookfield, or Newtown or Brookfield comes to us, they're on a different bandwidth, so the portable radios we have now don't work. We can't talk to them. So these radios would be able to have those bands in there, and those frequencies as well, all in one radio now.
Okay.
Plus, again, they're designed, the microphones and the cords are designed, they have a mayday button up here on the microphone now, and you have a channel selector and a volume selector on the microphone, because...
Yeah, chance.
Yeah, we wear the, we wear the radio on a strap inside of our coat, and that way, you know, right now, on our old radios, the mayday button is on the radio itself, and it's a little tiny button that you'd never, yeah, that you would never be able to hit.
You got to take the glove off, the...
Yeah. And at some point, you know, we're going to have to town-wide look at radio replacement for everything, for police and fire, totally. But the good thing with these radios is, they're adaptable to, you know, the system that will probably end up...
You said three different frequencies you can go to?
Yeah, there's free band, there's UHF, VHF, and then the 800 frequency.
Well, I was going to suggest, if this is not an emergency, that we hold off on the radios, because the police, they're altering what they put in from the original presentation. There's already been a change to that. So what I'd like to do is have a discussion and maybe even bring in, who's our radio manager?
Utility Communications.
What's that?
Utility Communications.
Yeah. I'd like to, I'd like to make sure we're getting the biggest bang for the buck, and make sure that we're getting everything that you guys need, as well as the police, too. So if we can hold that part off.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's not something, you know, that's just something we want to start getting, start to replace at some point, but...
It was in, it was in the police presentation.
On this one?
No. That 400,000?
Right, so this quote, let me just say, this quote was from last year. Two years in a row, I've done a FEMA grant for the assistance of firefighter grants for these radios. I did it first just for Stony Hill. The first year I did it, a couple years ago, they had criteria, they said the radio, the current radios we're going to replace aren't old enough yet, where you get nicks right away.
Oh, two years of grant?
Yeah. So the next year, they changed the specification, because they realized that the technology changes so rapidly with communications and that type of stuff, that now the radios would be old enough that they would be eligible. So at that point, we did it as a combination between, for both Bethel and Stony Hill, for a grant for radios, to do both departments, because we operate pretty much at the same incidence. So again, that was submitted, and we didn't show the financial need for it.
Isn't it enough that we're in Connecticut?
But, right, so I took a week off, and I went to Maryland last year, and I sat in on these firefighter grants, and I read the grants, and I graded them, and to help award them, and it's amazing, these small little departments in America that just want some basic firefighting gear to wear, rather than jeans and boots to, you know, go fight fires in a little town in Iowa where the coal mine closed up. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's very interesting that, you know, of course, they're going to get the monies because they need it the most, so I kind of see that. But we've tried it two or three times to get through that type of grant, and it just never worked out for us, so...
Did you mention the mutual aid?
Oh, yeah, no, we do, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, and other towns have gotten them over the years. Newtown bought for receipt radios three or four years ago, Brookfield bid. You know, we've had people look at the grants and review them, so it's, yeah, so...
Would our Senator Murphy have any impact on FEMA?
I mean, not necessarily, because it's peer reviewed, it's firefighters and fire marshals and people like that that go down there, get the grant application, and we read through all the narratives and the budgets, and we kind of grade it, and, yeah.
Politically, it's not...
Not, yeah, not necessarily, yeah, so... But, yeah, I mean, it's not the end of the world, I mean, but at some point, you know, we've talked a little about it, I've talked to Pugna, we just at some point have to do a major radio study and upgrade the entire, because all these, all the radios, police and fire radios were all, at the same time, about 12, 13 years ago.
You're much younger.
Yeah. So they're getting close to their life expectancy.
All right. All right, well, um, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor that we approve and send forward to the Board of Finance for their consideration. Um, purchase of 12 45-minute SCBA bottles, um, at, at, at a cost of 1,335 dollars each for a total of 17,000. Uh, one SCBA bottle, uh, filling station in the amount of 48,000, $40. And 12 SCBA masks at 325 dollars a piece for the amount of 4,000. And that comes to a total of 69,000, $40 to be applied to the 2019, 2020 capital non-recurring budget when, when that becomes available.
Sorry, what was the total?
69,040.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing none? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Thank you very much.
To let it to the Board of Finance probably next week.
Yeah, we from tonight. Yep, and they, they might, I, we'll, I'll talk to Bob Manfredo. He, they may not have a question.
Yeah, no.
But if you're.
And thank you for hitting a couple of prices because I was.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, that, that, that definitely, that definitely helps.
All right, good. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you very much. You don't have to leave.
No, we're, we're gonna.
All right, item number three, consideration of approval of appointment of special counsel for inland wetlands commission.
No, tax refund.
Oh, tax, you know what? I'm operating on about two hours of sleep, so, and that's two and a half. All right, uh, consideration of refund, tax refunding the amount of, I'll make a motion that we approve tax refunds the amount of 1,866 dollars and 14 cents.
Second.
As recommended by the tax collector, Mrs. Skako. Any questions?
Well, I see it's very, most of them are automobiles, Porsche, Timbers. You've got people driving while in nice cars.
That's right. It's why Governor Lott, or Governor Moore tried to take a lot of money out of our pockets last year. All right, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Okay, item three. Uh, inland wetland has a particularly technical case and they've requested that we appoint Chuck Andrews, uh, who's done a lot of land use work for the council, make a motion that we appoint Chuck Andrews uh, to consult and, uh, work with the inland wetland commission.
For what period of time?
Uh, it's on a special case. Do I, do I need to name the case?
I can tell you what it is, uh, for the record. And one of the reasons why I can't deal with it.
It's a, it's the Shelby Roach.
Because it's on my roof.
Yeah.
It's, uh, Shelley Woods LLC.
Right. What's it called?
Shelley Woods LLC. State that.
Yeah, all right. So I'll, I'll put in the, for, for the purpose of, uh, rendering opinion on the Shelley, rendering a, a written directive on the Shelley, Shelley Woods LLC?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay, second.
Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Um, considering, consideration of appointment to fill vacancy for the housing authority. I put a motion on the floor that we appoint Ms. Janet Cosgrove to that, and that is an open seat. It, uh, it expired on January 1st and, uh, we just, so recently had not attracted a, a volunteer. So I'll put that motion on the floor.
Second.
Uh, any questions, any comments? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Item number five. Consideration of appointment to the Western Connecticut Tourism Bureau. And Ms. Craig has volunteered to work with that. Um, and this is, I, what, how often do they meet? Once a quarter, I think?
Yeah.
Um, it's part of a 65-town thing. The, the state is trying to reinvigorate its tourism a little bit. So this is an opportunity that, uh.
So you'll be walk, working at the Walkham Center?
Yeah.
A greeter.
I'll put a motion on the floor to appoint Ms. Deon Craig to, uh, to be our board member of the Western Connecticut Tourism Bureau.
Aye.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Last item is consideration of appointment of directed trustee for the town pension plans. And, you know, I had this explained to me. Marty, what, what is the difference between a trustee and a directed trustee? I forget.
I honestly don't know. I mean, you know, it's, I think it's, all it is is, uh, you have to have somebody appointed. They're not, they're not hiring the Rome or appointing somebody, so.
Okay. All right, so what had happened is, uh, last year we went to a new actuary. Uh, we had used Wells Thomas for a long time and they were bought out by another company and, uh, they had, uh, the, 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 buying out company had not performed very well. So we, uh, Bob Kazlofsky retained Milliman and Associates. And they discovered in looking through our pension, um, materials that we were supposed to have had a trustee appointed, uh, many years ago. So this is correcting a, an oversight that occurred. I don't even know how long ago it was. But the, but for this type of pension, the trustee can't be the first selectman, nor can it be the board of selectmen nor any other, uh, person within town government. So, uh, there was an interview process. There was a bid that was put out and an interview process. And I think four different firms that do this, um, professionally were interviewed. The one that was selected, um, I didn't, I didn't even know if, uh,
First State?
Yeah. First State. They actually do it at no cost. They actually work with Morgan Stanley and Morgan Stanley, and the, the fee is paid from the accounts. But, um.
Fees paid from what?
From, from the, just the way Morgan Stan, uh, from the investment accounts, you know, when there's transactions. But that's all done through Morgan Stanley. So there were actually, there were three companies that were interviewed, Comerica, Broadbridge and First State. Uh, the committee's unanimous decision was that First State would be the best, uh, for, for the town of Bethel.
This was the pension committee?
What's that?
Pension committee?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Uh, and then the, the other person who sat in, so it was the insurance and pension committee that, that did the interview. But they also had our, our representative from Morgan Stanley, uh, Mike Fort, in on it. So I'll put a motion on the floor that we, uh, appoint First State to be the directed trustee as the, for the town pension plans.
Second.
Okay, any other questions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That carries. That's good. Trying to get more than three hours of sleep today.
You don't have a baby at all.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I landed at Kennedy last night at, I don't know what it was, like 9:30 or 10:00 or something.
Plane out.
Plane was right on time and then we sat.